Good morning, I called to order the September 22nd, 2015, Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting to Order. Will everyone please join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's go to the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Gile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the public forum where it's a time where citizens may speak on any issue not on the current agenda. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Morning.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I had a little issue come up this morning that I was a little concerned about. During the county administrator's update today, she brought forth some information that I've never seen before. It was the cost of compiling weekly packets that was in her administrative update. It actually stated that the cost of the copy machine in the paper was seven cents per copy. And I was a little taken back at that because I'd never seen that in writing before. I believe that the state laws say it's actual cost on what the county should charge for copies of documents. And the county resolution right now, I don't have the number, but it says a dollar for the first copy and 25 cents after, for each copy afterwards. I'm requesting that the commission look into the copy fees and the ambiguity that's caused in this situation. If it's seven cents a copy, why does the resolution say 25 cents or a dollar for the first copy? There is an issue there I would like to just clear up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. On the same issue, the one part I wasn't certain of was whether the administrative resources offices were mailing out packets, therefore the $2,500 worth of printed paper might include packets to others than the five county commissioners. And if that was the case, that would further reduce the number of costs per copy. So it might be less than what Ray was speaking toward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number one.
It's OCCK Workforce Solutions Demonstration and have comments by Shanna Sowers, Workforce Solutions Director.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. I am Shanna Sowers from Workforce Solutions at OCCK. I'm the director there. And I have brought a couple of my employment consultants. My left ear is Patsy Stockham. She's a certified employment consultant. And Natalie LeRivold is my newest employee. I want to thank you for the invite that we received for OCCK to come and speak at your meetings. I am the first one that signed up to speak. And every couple of months, we're going to have additional department heads that will be coming. In November, Transportation will be here. In January, Community Inclusion. In March, Solution Outreach Center. In May, our regional manager for Salina will be here. In July, it will be our HR department discussing training. And September, it'll be our Home Health Department. And I know you invited all of us because we received county funding from you and we thank you very much for that. I'll go ahead and get started. As I said, I'm from Workforce Solutions. We work with individuals that are seeking competitive employment in the community. We are located at our corporate office, which is on Schilling here in Salina. And we also have other offices that we work out of. One is in Abilene, one is in Beloit, one is in Concordia. I included in my presentation that we are a nonprofit and we've been around since 1970. And today, we employ over 250 employees and that would be the entire workforce of OCCK. An overview of our services there range from community employment services, case management, infant toddler children services, transportation, CityGo. In my home, chore free services, fiscal management, independent living, traumatic brain injury, developmental disability, and then our SOC department, which works with accommodations and assistive technology resources. We have a three-fold mission. Our service mission is to promote and contribute to the success of our customers. Community mission is exercise and or influence leadership in the creation of quality communities. And the economic mission is to ensure our financial success so that our customers can be successful. So Workforce Solutions Division, we specifically work with, we are specialized community employment consulting division of OCCK. We work with individuals who have barriers to employment, helping them find and maintain competitive employment. And also, my department is in charge of Salina's largest employment expo that goes on in October at Central Mall. I brought the most recent poster, you've probably seen these around town. We're starting to get them hung up and we're securing employers to rent a booth at our expo at this time. And the radio advertising is going. The expo is not a moneymaker by any means for OCCK. We do it in part as a community service project. And this year will be our 25th annual, so it's a big deal to us. And we'd like to invite you to stop out. It's Tuesday, October 6th from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we'll have a live remote there from Rockingham Radio. And hopefully, we can help the employers that are looking to fill their open positions as well as the job seekers who want to either make a lateral move or find an additional position or change jobs or for those unemployed, for them to find a job that they can walk away with and feel good that they have, you know, gotten at the expo. We do have employers that utilize the interview booth that's there so they can interview on site and do their background checks later, things like that. So it's really a fun time for us and something that we will continue to do. I employ in my department besides myself, I have three employment consultants that are full-time. As I said, Natalie over here, she is housed out of our Concordia office. And she covers Beloit, Concordia, and surrounding communities. So when referrals come in or we work with individuals that need assistance in that community or near that area, she's the one that works with them. And Allison today is in my Beloit office and Patsy is over here. They both have the national certification as a certified employment support professional as well as myself. Allison and Patsy cover Saline County, Abilene, Minneapolis, and any surrounding communities that we have individuals that need assistance in looking for a job. And as I said, I'm the director. We, an overview of our department, we do a lot of things, but mainly, we find competitive work for people with barriers to employment. We don't, that doesn't mean we get them the job. We lead them into the positions that would be a good fit for them based on assessments that we do. So we really, you know, want to know what their interests are. We also want to know what employers are looking for in the community. So we love it when they call us and say, "Do you have any people you can send me? I have three openings." And, you know, we send anyone that we can that's interested in that field down to apply for those jobs. We focus on community-based, competitive, integrated employment. So these are jobs that you or I would hold. And we do not focus on the sheltered workshops. There is a sheltered workshop at OCCK. That's a different department that we'll visit with you about that later. Our funding comes from referrals through additional rehab, economic and employment services, which those are through DCF, temporary aid for needy families, and then obviously, Saline County. Some of the things that we do are we work one-on-one with job seekers and we provide skills depending on where they're at, what they're needing. Might be soft skill training, resume development, interview preparation, application assistance, career guidance, job coaching, work site assessments. And I'll let Patsy explain a little bit more about the work site assessment, what actually happens with that. Because we do have sites around town and really in all of our communities where we can assess an individual that maybe wants to have a job, but they don't know, you know, what type of job or if they have the ability to perform that job, maybe because of a medical diagnosis that they've received or an accident or, you know, anything that there might be a little bit of a barrier. So I'll let you talk about that.
Like I said, I'm Patsy Stockham. I'm one of the employment consultants. And as far as the work assessment sites, we have several lined up here in Salina. We do work with the American Red Cross, All-Star Lanes, Boling Alley, Ad Astra Coffee Shop on Santa Fe. They have been very accommodating in providing us sites for us to take folks who are unsure about what they can do. Maybe there is a social barrier or a cognitive barrier or even a physical barrier. So they have allowed us to come into their businesses and let us work there for a day, two days, sometimes even longer. We assess them on their stamina. We help them learn how they learn. Having been a former teacher myself, one of the things that I like to do is see what kind of training techniques are effective with each individual. So we will train them on everything from custodial to clerical. We are always looking for more assessment sites. Natalie, who's our newest consultant, has set up several sites in Concordia also. And so we have sites there. We also work with Abilene to set up sites in the Abilene area. Sometimes this is a good way for someone who isn't sure if community employment is right for them. And in this way, they can go in, they can do some work, and they can make that decision for themselves whether community employment is what they really want to do and is something they can do and be effective and serve their employers in that way. So like I said, we're always looking for more community employers in the Salina area to partner with. So obviously, if you have any ideas, please let Shanna know and we can go and discuss the process. We're not looking to have folks work every day. This is on an as-needed basis. And another thing I would like to mention is, most of the referrals that we get for community-based work assessments are from vocational rehab, which means that the state of Kansas provides for their workers' compensation coverage when they are on that work site. So there is no liability on behalf of the employer to offer their business for these work sites or for these work assessments.
Yeah, and the employer does not have to pay anything to them. So they're just offering their site as an assessment site, okay? Then we have follow-along services. So once a person gets a job, once they are offered that position, if the employer would rather have us work alongside them to make sure that they understand the entire job description, we can have the follow-along services with that. We call that job coaching. And, you know, we've had times where an employer will call and say, you know, so-and-so is not working as fast as we would like them. Is there any way you can come help us? And, you know, we sometimes work on a, depending on the person's barrier, if they're a learner that they learned best by pictures or, you know, then Patsy has put binders together so they can go through those to see the order that they need to do something. We're basically there to make this transaction as easy as possible on the employer so that they don't feel like they've hired someone new that might have a little bit of a barrier or learning disability or something. We're going to be there to follow through and we're going to be there to help not only our job seeker but also the employer. And so they really like that part of the service that we offer. And then also, sometimes we encounter an individual that might need services elsewhere. So we refer to other services. Sometimes they're in other departments of OCCK. Other times, it might be mental health. It might be, you know, needing clothing at the Goodwill or the various places that are offered around town. But that's one thing my consultants are very good about is assessing what someone's needs are and getting them to the right resources in town. I want to give you a little bit on our department highlights. I've been here for 16 months. I'm a transplant from Nebraska. Don't shoot me. That's a good state, but I know I don't have very many Nebraska fans anywhere I go here. But in 2014, we served, and this would be all of 2014, we served 100 customers out of our department only. 60 of those were from Saline County. There were 23 jobs obtained and 23 of those positions were Saline County residents or they had received, you know, gotten their job in Saline County. Not all of, you're probably wondering, well, if you served 100, why did only 23 or 36 get a job? Not all referrals are for job placements. Sometimes we get a referral for the assessments we were talking about. And if it's determined that that person just cannot do that job, then they might be someone who decides, "I don't want to," you know, we try an assessment at two or three different places, sometimes four. They may decide it's not for them and they don't move on into the department of, excuse me, component of looking for a job. We also have individuals that, you know, with our EES contract, we're toward the individuals through Department of Children and Family Services that are on aid to dependent children. They move a lot. They might get a job and right before they're referred to us, so therefore, they don't finish the program. Sometimes they get a job and instead of having us follow through, they just stop coming in. And so we have to be able to, in order to count their job, they have to be at that job for a minimum of 10 days, okay? So not everyone is looking for a job that we work with. The average wage in 2014 was $8.67 and the average days until someone was employed was 68.41 days. Now, as of about two weeks ago in 2015, we had so far worked with 103 customers. We have served 59 individuals in Saline County. 33 jobs had been obtained. 26 of them were Saline County. The average wage is now $9.20 because that's one thing we really look, we look to find jobs that are better paying. We don't, you know, we don't really want minimum wage jobs for the individuals we work with, but we want them to shoot for the moon basically and look for a better paying job because that's what we all want to do. Average days until employed is 46.36. So as you can see, we're getting a little bit better. I, as I said, I had, since I've been here, had secured the contract with Employment and Economic Services because that's what I did where I came from in Nebraska, so I knew that really well. And then I am currently working on a possible contract through the Veteran Affairs for the homelessness around town to try to help individuals or vets that are, you know, obviously homeless, displaced, can't find a job. And I'm, in fact, when I finish here, I'm meeting with them again today. So hopefully, I'll get something going with that where we can work with those individuals. I want to talk about a success story here. We actually have a few of them. I'll talk about Tara. And Tara had previously been employed for 10 years and found herself back on the job market. Her goal was to work 25 hours a week so that she could take care of her pre-teen daughter. She has a history of spinal meningitis and it left her with memory loss and takes her longer to process information. And she has a history of seizures and she learns best with repetitive steps. So those are the types of situations we sometimes get into where we're assisting someone with job search and, you know, you can see where not every job would be good for every person. I mean, you have to kind of lead them in the right direction. She began job preparation where she received instruction on her resume development, cover letter, interviewing preparation, filling out applications, and then networking. She successfully completed and moved into the next component, which we call job development. And that's where she began looking for a job. And upon a job lead, her employment consultant assisted her with applying and eventually setting up an interview through the agency director where she applied. She ended up getting a job, her job match was at a children's daycare. She is working, currently, working at Martin Luther King Junior Childcare Center. She began working as a part-time substitute person. So she didn't really have secured hours or anything like that. But we talked to her about what it takes to improve, you know, your skills at that job and show the boss that you're a worthwhile person and that you really can do the job and that you want to, you know, become a full-time employee there. So she began that in June of 2014. We continue to work with her. As I said, we have that follow-through service. And she also had received 25 hours of job coaching, which was eventually phased out because that is the goal with job coaching, is that you start phase out from the beginning where they're learning the skills and you're just slowly backing away. She became a valuable asset to the daycare and showcasing her great work ethics that she had learned and, you know, some of the skills that she brought herself. And she was offered a permanent position in August of 2014. She currently works 24 to 28 hours per week. Now, this person is also on disability. So she has her disability income and then she's also working in a job. And, you know, as we all know, not everyone on disability works a job. But if they want to work, we help them get a job and they can work up to a certain point without it affecting their benefits. They can also work up past that point where they might have a monthly co-pay that they have to pay in order to be making more than what is allowed or they take away some of their social security, if you will, okay? The next successful placements, I will let Patsy talk about, these are two of her cases.
Actually, these both are just in the last two months. The first gentleman came, has been through Workforce Solutions several times over the last 10 years or so. The first time he came through, he had no vocational objective. All he knew at is was he likes to drive. So Workforce Solutions and OCCK helped him get a CDL originally. But then after years of working as a CDL driver, a couple of years ago, he was diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. And as you know, that is a big barrier to CDL driving. So we helped him kind of redefine his vocational objective and helped him get a job as a diesel service rider. He did that for a couple of years, but decided his real passion is driving. He came to us and asked for help again. He said he had heard about a DOT diabetes waiver. So we navigated the diabetes waiver process with him through the Federal Department of Transportation in Washington DC, helped him get that diabetes waiver, and he is back to driving full-time now. He is making, on average, $18 an hour as a driver. He is not paid by the mile like a lot of drivers are. He is paid a salary plus, I believe, like a portion of his loads, which averages out to about $18 an hour. Full benefits, which is amazing for him. And he just called me yesterday and said he bought his first new car. So he's really excited about that. So the next one actually is ongoing currently. He endured, this gentleman endured a traumatic brain injury in high school from a car accident. But he did manage to go to college for three years, but as with that brain injury, his learning processes were different. He found himself extremely frustrated through the learning process overall. So he ended up dropping out of college in his third year. But that was about 20 years ago. During that time, he has struggled to maintain employment over the last 20 years. The longest he had maintained a job was about two and a half years. Found himself going through temp agencies and so on and so forth. Well, he just secured a position out at the Distribution Center for Advanced Auto Parts. And through their gracious accommodations, I was able to do some job coaching for him and we were able to carve out a job that really tapped into his skills and his talents. And current reports from them is that I've actually already faded out because we found a trainer that was a good match for him. If you've ever been out to the warehouse out there, it is very computer-based, which was very intimidating to him. But we found a good trainer out there that was able to connect with him. And once I saw that that connection was made, I was able to fade out and turn it over to the trainer. And they were able to find a good fit for him in receiving. So in some ways, he's kind of had a customized job, but it also meets their needs. So that's always our goal is to meet the needs of the employer as well as the needs of the individual. So it's a mutually beneficial situation in this case. So this has limited his frustration. He's making more money than he's ever made before and after 60 days, he's going to have benefits which he's never had. So both of these, I believe, are going to be, they're still young in terms of, or new, but I do believe these will both be very positive success stories with higher-than-average minimum wage, higher wage. And in this case, both of these gentlemen will have company-supplied, provided benefits.
Thank you, Patsy. All right. So also, you know, one of the things that we do and we strongly encourage, you know, all of our individuals we work with to hold these same beliefs is that when you are employed, you have higher self-esteem, you have an improved lifestyle, you learn while you earn because we're always learning throughout life. And, you know, as I said, if they go out on a limb and try a new job or something they hadn't done before, they're learning new skills. They have a feeling of pride being a great role model, especially those that have children. You know, sometimes they were socialized to be on assistance. And so we teach them about being a better role model to their children so that they can hopefully break that cycle and start working. We also, you know, really encourage the community inclusion with all of the individuals we work with. We want them out in the community, not in a skilled workshop. We want them to, you know, learn the process of what it takes to be a really good citizen and to do well in your community. They also receive financial security and it reduces dependency on public systems. We talk a lot about those things. So, how can you help? Well, I would like you to review your business plans and see if hiring a person with a barrier will benefit your business. Refer people to our services. Provide job leads. If you know of anyone that has a job lead or a job opening, please bring up OCCK Workforce Solutions. And then speak at OCCK-sponsored events. That would be a big help to us. Thank you for listening to me and being a part of this group. I can take questions if anyone has any.
Any questions? Appreciate your time. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Item number two.
Request for Action 180-15, Kansas Department of Corrections, FY15 outcomes with a staff report by Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, it is. Okay. This is the year-end cleanup for FY15, Department of Corrections, juvenile and adult requirements throughout these three documents. The first one is an outcome report. We submit a quarterly outcome report to the adult side of our We submit a quarterly outcome report to the adult side of our DOC partners. And then the final year-end cleanup is due October 1st and we get board and commission signatures for approval. This has been in front of Ottawa County, it's been in front of our advisory board, and now the final step is in front of the Saline County Commissioners. I'm seeking signatures from all commissioners, plus the chair on the main face sheet for, to send this into the Department of Corrections. I won't go through each individual outcome because you have those in your packets, but there were three that we tried to focus on. One was to do a 3% increase in our successful completion rate. We met that. We had to get to 64.9 and we got to 64.9. The goal would be at some point to get to 75%. That's where DOC would like to see you, that you successfully complete 75% of your adult clients. We are not there, we're not even close, as you can see, but we're certainly working on it and we'll continue to do that. But every year, we will have at least a 3% increase. The next one was to resolve a problem we have with low-risk clients being in our program. We are not supposed to be supervising low-risk clients. We're a high-risk, high-need department. Unfortunately, there are times where the court or the county attorney's office doesn't agree with releasing a low-risk client for various reasons, and that's fine. I support their reasons. But we needed to come up with a, a resolution or, to the problem because our staff were spending a lot of time with low-risk clients, which is a waste of their time. It also is evidence-based practices that if you over-supervise low-risk clients, you only lead them to become a high-risk client. So you want to not provide those high-risk services to a low-risk client. So we came up with an administrative policy and got permission from DOC and they're putting on, we put them on administrative level. They're seen less often, they have to report less often, less activity on their part. Any problems along the way, anything we hear when we check their employers or check on them at night, and we can bump them right back up to a higher risk level. But at this point, it's been very successful. And the next one was just that I was going to start laying off staff. I kind of guess, I thought if I put it out there and put it in my outcomes, that if you didn't fund us with at least a 20% increase from last year, we would have to lay off staff. We got full funding and some, so we did not lay off any staff. So that outcome, I consider a success and we met that outcome. So I'm seeking permission for you all to sign this document and forward to the Department of Corrections by October 1st.
Very good. Questions of Annie? Public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I may be approved by signature of the Community, Community Corrections Evaluation Summary, Year-End Report, and Outcome Fiscal Year 2015 is recommended. Was that 180-15?
RFA.
RFA?
Pretty good.
Yes.
There's a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Item number three.
Request for Action 183-15, Kansas Department of Corrections FY16, Juvenile Carryover Reimbursement Program Income Budget Summary, again with Annie Grevis, Director of Community Corrections.
Again, another year-end finish-up. We are allowed to have what we call reimbursement budget, carryover budget. We've been carrying these dollars over in the juvenile funds since the 1990s. They're dollars that we collect for various reasons, for services we offer to our clients. And we can carry those over. The only thing we have to do is show a budget at the end of every year, how we would spend those dollars. So one of the things I want to say, first of all, is that I'll be doing the adult one shortly and you'll see a huge difference in the amount of money. The juveniles do not need as many dollar services, nor do we collect nearly the funds we do from our juvenile population. We have a lot less offenders on our juvenile side than we do our adult side. So that is one of the reasons you'll see a less, a dollar amount. Also, we do a contract, UA contract service for St. Francis Academy and we collect fees on that. We were throwing all that into our adult reimbursements. We're going to now split it 50/50 based on the staff work at our agency, collecting those UAs and submitting those, that information. So that's the slight difference. So this budget is the amount of $178,530.62. Again, it's all allowed to carry over and be expended as long as you submit a budget to show how you would spend it. I'll go over that initial face sheet and then if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. But we put about $128,530 in salary of administrative and staff. That's not salary that goes to them, that's payout salary. If a staff person leaves tomorrow, I've got to pay them payout for their sick leave and their vacation. I've paid as much as $17,000 to a staff person when they left. So if I don't have it in this budget, I don't have it at all because it cannot come out of my fiscal allocation. So we have to put it in there. And we try to project just an amount over the years, a trend, what might be, and so that's what we do with that. The rest of it goes in just categories, travel, training, communications. Just a 25% increase of what we have in our allocation budget. Surprises happen all the time, computers go down, chairs bust, different things happen, and you have to take it out of somewhere. If it's not in our allocation budget, this is exactly where it comes out of. So it's a good, a good thing to have. Supplies for client services is in here also in the amount of $16,000. And that there is there for the same reason. We run out of dollars in our allocation budget, we come to this budget and use those dollars there. As I said, juveniles do not repay services. They don't have the means to do it and most parents will not pay their services. So we have to fund a large portion of our juvenile clients. And that comes to a budget of 178,530.62. As long as it is approved by the advisory board and the county commissioners, we then get to maintain that money and utilize those funds throughout the years. It has been in front of Ottawa County, it's been in front of the advisory board, all approved at that point. I'm needing Commission Chair signature and Dawn's signature to do final approval to DOC.
Good. Good report. And you went over it last week with us, also upstairs. So any questions of Annie?
Is that money for capers? Is that what that is, some of it?
I don't know if it'd be for, I suppose it would be for anything that if we owe, if an employee leaves and has been with me for 17 years, it's vacation, sick leave, any benefit that they would be owed by the county, whatever the policy is, we have to pay it.
Now, do schoolteachers get those same type of policies?
I have no idea. I can't answer that.
I think the legislature might be looking into that and there might be some changes. I think they get 90 days of sick leave paid.
We do whatever county policy is. Whatever Saline County policy is, what we follow.
You're, you're talking about, I think, two things.
Retirement.
You're talking about sick leave and vacation payout, which capers is thinking about changing it so that won't go towards your retirement, but, but we would still owe them the sick leave, vacation payout, so.
That could make quite a difference in their retirement, though.
Yeah. Yeah, they are. I know the legislators are looking at that.
Public comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, is this on our budget for 16? Is that what I'm seeing here?
This isn't on the county budget at all. In fact, if you approve it, there'll be no budget impact at all to the county.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at that. All right.
That was the Dave Smith answer.
And I just did an RFA today. I got it damn perfect. You're going to be very happy when you see that RFA.
Public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 183-15, the fiscal year 2016 Juvenile Carryover Reimbursement Budget Summary, submitted in the amount of $178,530.62.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Item number four.
RFA 184-15, Kansas Department of Corrections FY16, Adult Carryover Reimbursement and Program Income Budget Summary, again with Annie Grevis.
Thank you. Again, same thing as I just explained to you on the adult side, only a different budget amount. We've been collecting these dollars for 10 years longer than the juvenile budget. We have four and five times more adult offenders. They utilize services at a much higher rate than juvenile offenders, so we do collect those. Also, as I previously said, we've been always throwing those St. Francis dollars from our contract UA collection into the adult reimbursement. And that's about $35,000 to $40,000 a year is pretty significant. So we will be splitting that 50/50 and rolling some of that into the juvenile reimbursement budget, which is where it should have gone. I just did not process that as well as I should have last year. And we'll do that. So the difference was that in dollar. Again, we do the exact same thing. Buy out, payout to staff if they would leave. Services, a 25% increase from our budgeted allocation because we just don't have enough dollars in our allocation to meet all the requirements that are necessary to run an agency and with the number of staff we have. And then service dollars for the clients. There is never enough dollars. Even with how gracious everything is happening with our drug court, we have to take dollars out of here to supply services to our drug court clients, which is great. I mean, it's a perfect way to do it. I'm glad we have the dollars. We continue to recoup, we do well. Obviously, if you're efficient with your dollars and maintain them properly, you're going to carry over a good budget. So as long as the advisory board and the commissioners approve it, it can go to DOC and we maintain those dollars. Again, been in front of Ottawa, been in front of our advisory board, all have approved. And now I'm seeking Saline County Commissioners and Dawn's signatures to move on to DOC.
Public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the fiscal year 2016 Adult Carryover Reimbursement Budget Summary, submitted in the amount of $147,367.01, as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Can I just say one thing? Public acknowledgement. We received from Ms. Lauren White, who I believe is the owner of the Heart of Dixie Restaurant, gift certificates for drug court. I mean, just out of the blue, received those gift certificates, $20 apiece, a handsome amount of gift certificates. And she said that she knows some people in drug court, but mainly wanted to partner with us. So I want to, she received a letter from me and I invited her to drug court and thanked her. But I really wanted to publicly say this. I'm not singling out any special place, but for them to find us and seek us out and be true community partners with Saline County and our drug court, said a lot about it, drug court, and really spoke volumes to me. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge her and thank her for that assistance. The clients will be thrilled when Judge Johnson gives them a $20 gift card to that restaurant.
I, I think that at the drug court last time, somebody asked also how you can get involved and, and given that.
And we have several community partners that give us free services to our drug court clients. And I've acknowledged them throughout the couple of years, but this is a new one, so I did want to publicly say something.
Annie, you might want to just quickly, for the people that don't understand and have never attended one of those drug court meetings, what those gift cards are for.
We have sanctions and incentives and if they have a good week and they're doing well and they remain drug-free, they're employed, things are going well for them, the judge has an option to give them sanct, rewards, incentives. The incentives are typically out of a fishbowl and they're like free UAs, reduction of your community service hours, those kind of things. But every once in a while, when you've had a long period of doing well and you're really showing some real promise towards the effort, he will dip into a gift card and give them a fast food gift card, $5, $10 gift card. These will be a real treat. These will probably be a phase. When you jump from phase one to two, you've made some real strides. This will probably be a phase gift card. Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Annie. All right, we voted on that, so we just go to item number five.
RFA 185-15 and Amendment Number 42 to Resolution Number 1254 concerning airport zoning. Have staff report by David Neal, Planning and Zoning Director.
Mr. Neal.
Morning Commissioners. We went over this briefly in our study session last week. This was a text amendment to our zoning code, applied by the airport authority. What they're doing is changing the name of the airport to Salina Regional Airport, so we have the correct term in our code there. Removing non-precision instrument approaches. That goes more to how the airport operates, but there is some language in our code that talks about it. Adding FAA and Salina Airport Authority to the definitions so that we have those properly defined. They're adopting current FAA terminology and definitions so that they can continue to comply with the FAA regulations. And they're going to incorporate by reference these Salina Regional Airport drawings, which we'll go over a couple of those real quick. Those are available online. Then they're going to amend the variance process slightly. Basically, how we handle the airport for Saline County, we're looking at protecting the airspace envelope so that basically planes don't hit a building. That's the easiest way to put it. The black area there are the sections that the airport occupies. Between the black and the red, if anybody is doing a use outside of agriculture or a house, we're going to get a conditional use permit so that the airport can weigh in with the planning commission before we approve that. And then that yellow circle shows the area, we notify the airport of anything built in that area. What they're looking for is the height. And like I've mentioned before, being here three years, I don't think I've ever had the airport reject anything. You will have a, I think I've got some more detailed areas, but next to the airport, basically, you can be at 95 feet. And there are very few people that are going to build anything with that kind of height. This is the actual notification map. The, the circle I drew was basically just a circle. This is the actual map that we have in the office and, at the airport. The drawing here shows the airspace area and the way I've always explained it is kind of like a stadium. It builds up around the airport, trying to lift the planes up and out of the area. And then the last, let me go back to the last one there. Whoops. Come on, I can work a mouse. Looking at the height area, see if I can get my mouse to do this. Some of the heights that we looked at, for instance, right about this area, the height limit was about 98 feet. There are a couple houses out there, so those houses would be restricted to nothing over 98 feet high. I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. If you look out their main runway, if you go further north, it travels straight up to 135 and I-70 intersection area. And you can see the grain elevator that is actually in that flight path. So a building that tall can still exist and work with the airport.
Tom's house is pretty close to being that 95 feet, isn't it?
I don't know.
Tom Rex drew it to the left of the airport runway. You know where I'm talking about? Oh, you've never been out there? It's a, it's the tallest house out there.
Yeah, but to be honest, most houses I've seen, 35 feet is about all you're getting.
Well, I understand that off the ground, but I mean, he's sitting on top, on top of that hill.
It might be getting close.
You know, cloud. I'll bet it is pretty close.
And that's what they're looking at is the airspace elevation, but even that house was approved with no problems.
Yeah, I'd say that if it was a water tower up there, you'd probably, you'd probably be in the flight zone. Would, would you not? You know where I'm talking about? It's on cloud, is it? Is that cloud? Yeah. Okay.
The last part I was going to talk to you about was the variance procedure. Anytime we need a variance from the zoning codes, we apply to that and go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We always look for a hardship. The way I've always explained hardships for a variance, it has to be something that is not your own making. I usually use physical things like a river, something that you can't change, you can't alter, you can't really work around. So we need to work our codes around what you're doing. Honestly, with, when it comes to an airport, the variance you're going to ask for is height and that's, unless the airport is saying yes to it, it's not something that I would support. So the chances of a variance even being applied for would be pretty slim. Well, one, because we allow quite a bit already. Two, because that would probably end up interfering with the airport. What we're proposing is to put in some more requirements only for applications that are near the airport. You would end up applying to the FAA to get a determination that there's no substantial impact so that it doesn't interfere with the airport operations. And that's all I have for you. Tim is here for, any extra questions?
I don't think that was, if somebody's already built something in those areas, it's not going to affect them anyway, isn't that right, Tim? A pre-existing thing that's been built, this isn't going to affect any of those.
No, no.
Again, Tim Rogers, Executive Director for Salina Airport Authority. It's probably easier to answer your questions from up here. And Commissioner Guile, I can address your question and Commissioner Price. The question is, is the text amendments and technical changes to this resolution in the zoning overlay district, it is not retroactive, so all structures that are in place now does not impact them. Since 1992, it, this overlay district has, I think, struck the balance between property ownership and new construction and new development in or around the airport. So there is no retroactive, you know, aspect of this. In fact, the, the, the resolution is drafted and is, is in place and is drafted now reaffirms that it is not retroactive. Commissioner Guile, as far as existing structures, yes, there are some structures that if, are sitting on top of a higher, higher elevation and the calculation is always, you know, the height above, you know... height above, you know, the base elevation. And that particular housing on the cloud to the west of the primary runway is outside of the primary approach to the runway. It's, it's even outside a transitional side slope and so that's why that's a good, a good compatible land use in that area. And again, those structures, as they have been constructed since 1992, have gone through the conditional use permit process whereby the airport authorities working with, with county planning staff and the property owner to find the, you know, to accommodate the construction and the development in this, in the vicinity of the Salina Regional Airport.
What's the elevation of that airport out there then?
The base elevation, the base elevation is 1,288 feet. It's, that is the highest point of the airport, of the airfield.
Right.
And then, but each evaluation within this area, you go to the proposed site of development and you take that base elevation.
A distance away from.
Right, and then you determine the height above that location, so it's just.
But I, I was really surprised that's out of that circle, you know, that you had drawn there.
Well, the conical surface to, is that yellow area, that is determined based upon the base elevation of 1,288 feet. And that yellow area, that conical surface, that horizontal surface is, is, represents 150 feet above the air, airfield. That's kind of the bottom of this, that's the bottom of the stadium floor, so to speak.
Okay. Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Is there any public comments? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve amending Section 12.10 Airport Zoning, RFA 185-15, Amendment Number 42 to Resolution Number 1254 Airport Zoning as recommended by staff.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. Item number six. Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Resolution dash fifteen, uh, 15-2177, Celine County Health Department Advisory Board Member Appointments. Have Jason Teller here with a, as a Health Department Coordinator.
Mr. Teller.
Good morning Commissioners. Before you have the request for action to approve the resolution that will appoint the members to the Health Department Advisory Council. The only change from the primary group of appointments that you voted on last week was Elizabeth Bonilla, who was not able to serve, and then contacting Gwenda Philbrook, which was one of the alternates you had mentioned, and she accepted.
Very good. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners. I think a lot of thought was put into getting a, a good group and a very varied group and so I think we kind of came up with a good list there, so appreciate all your direction on that too.
Jason, just for the people watching at home, in case they missed that in the paper, if you would like to read those names and what position they will hold and if they are voting or non-voting.
I can do that. Council Chairman will be Dr. David Doopy. Council Member Amanda McCallas. Council Member Tom Bell. Council Member Dr. Glenn Egland. Council Member Dr. Jacob Hodges. Council Member Ron Kramer. And Council Member Gwenda Philbrook. Those are the voting members of the Advisory Council. In addition to myself as ex-officio and I'll be a parliamentarian, agenda and minutes, et cetera. And then Commissioner Monty Sadwick as ex-officio and representing the county commission.
Very good.
The meetings will be open to the public?
They will, according to open meetings, open meetings, aye.
All right, is there any public comments? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Resolution 15-2177, Appointment Members to the Celine County Health Department Advisory Board as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Moving on to item number seven. Wasn't that recommended by the county commissioners though? Was it recommended by staff?
It didn't say that though.
I know.
Yeah, it should be.
Fair enough. Good point. Item number seven.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for September 15, 2015.
Is there any public comment on this? Bring it back. On the minutes?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe, I just wanted to point out that the minutes were not in the agenda packet this week and I think it was because Don didn't get them done in time or something, I don't, I don't know.
Well, they were done Friday. I don't know why they weren't in the pack, but they were done Friday.
Well, I think that there was a comment about that, that they weren't included, but they would be or something. I would just point that out.
Okay, thank you.
Still don't have a working computer, so that's part of the issue.
Bring, bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the county commission minutes of September 15, 2015 as presented.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission today? Are there any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read another quote. This one is from the First Chief Justice of the US Supreme Court, man by the name of John J. "The Bible is the best of all books, but is the word of God and teaches us the way to be happy in this world and in the next. Continue therefore to read it and to regulate your life by its precepts. Providence is given to our people the choice of their rulers and it is a duty as well as the privilege and interest of our Christian nation to select and prefer Christians for their rulers." John J.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So, I move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Here.